This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, February 27th. Please stand for our invocation led by Councilwoman Cory Penn, District 1, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you right now, God, for this great city of Mobile. Thank you for the administration, the mayor, his team. Thank you for the city council. Thank you for our team, my staff. We thank you for every department here in the city of Mobile, God. We thank you right now, God, that you would give us wisdom. We declare unity right now, God. We declare peace in our city right now, God. We thank you for elevation. We thank you, Lord, that our revenues are high right now and crime is down right now, Lord, and we call it done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, in the book of the American Constitution.
Roll call, President Small, Vice President Gregory, Councilmember Penn.
Yeah.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yeah.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dave.
Yeah.
Councilmember Woods.
Yeah.
Statement of rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our February 27th meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including the cellphones at this time, please put on the off of the vibrator position, the off of the vibrator position. Interpersonate is desired to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance appeal of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonate is desired to speak to the council on another agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the city council must be identified retained to the city of Mobile business. Interpersonate has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on another agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. These speakers allow three minutes to address the council. A bell will indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. Second bell indicates that the time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be known to applause and or public outcry allowed. And that we know that the month of February, we do celebrate Black History Month, and we have several citizens that came down this morning to help us to celebrate Black History Month during our city council meeting. And I'm gonna ask Councilman Cory Penn to introduce our first guest this morning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor and privilege to introduce our first guest here, and they represent the greatest high school in the world. That's John L. LaFlore. We have Dr. Williams here, the principal, as well as Ms. Gaines and Ms. Dillon, the chorus director. I was a part of the advanced chorus team. Do not ask me to sing, but I enjoy. So at this time, I will ask Ms. Dillon and her team to come. Ms. Dillon, can you share the what the chorus about this thing? And can you, it's some great things that happening with the advanced chorus, and can you share that information? And you could do it right here at this podium as they come forth. Just give them a big hand as they come forth.
As Councilman Penn said, this is the John L. LaFlore Magnet High School Chorus. This morning, we are here to celebrate Black History, and we will be singing a spiritual titled "Follow the Drinking Gourd." And just a fun fact, LaFlore Magnet Rattler Chorus, these students that you see before you, they have been invited for the prestigious honor of singing in Carnegie Hall in New York. So we'll be going to New York this summer. So this is "Follow the Drinking Gourd."
Yeah, we'd like to thank LaFlore High School and their choir. Let's get another hand clap, everyone. Representing District 1, LaFlore High School. Well, District 3 is not gonna let LaFlore High School outdo them. We have Mrs. Leta Fights, and we're gonna ask her to come down, which is a product of District 3. She's my church member, a third grader at Mary B. Austin Elementary School. Let's give her a hand clap, everyone, as she come down.
"Still I Rise" by Maya Angelou. You may write me down in history with your bitter, twisted lies. You may trot me in the very dirt, but still, like dust, I rise. Does my sassiness upset you? Why are you beset with gloom? Because I walk like I've got oil wells pumping in my living room, just like moons and like suns and a certainty of tides and just like hopes spring high. Still, I rise. Did you wanna see me broken? Head bowed lower, eyes, shoulders fallen just like teardrops, weakened by my soulful cries? Does my haughtiness offend you? Don't you take it awful hard, because I laugh like I got gold mines digging in my own backyard. You may shoot me with your words, you may cut me with your eyes, you may kill me with your hatefulness, but still, like air, I rise. Out of the hustle of history shame, I rise. Up from a past that's rooted in pain, I rise. I'm like a black ocean, leaping and wild, willing and swelling, I bear through the tide. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, I rise. Up to a daybreak that's wondrously clear. Give down a gift that my ancestors gave. I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise, I rise, I rise.
"Still I Rise." Thank you so much, Leta. Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes of February 20th.
Some moved.
Take improper move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson's office.
Council President, I'll be making comments on behalf of the mayor. But the mayor would like to thank all of the staff members, the volunteers who gave up part of their Saturday to help collect scrap tires from our citizens. For the second year in a row, the City of Mobile Office of Resilience held a scrap tire collection event, and once again, Mobileans responded and helped keep hundreds of tires out of our local environment. In all, 934 tires were collected from 287 city residents. We wouldn't be able to hit these kinds of numbers without volunteers from groups like Osprey Initiative and the Student Conservation Association, and without the participation of our citizens. The mayor would also like to recognize the milk crate dog. We want to recognize the animal services team, as well as the Mobile County Animal Shelter and our volunteers. A dog named Bear had a box stuck on his head for months. Bear's size and box made it very difficult to safely trap and help him. Thanks to many hours of dedication, we were finally able to help Bear. He is in good health at the animal shelter and will soon be up for adoption. And if you aren't familiar with that, this, this box was stuck around his neck for, for months, and they, they kept trying to catch him and remove this box, and they were finally able to do that. Money Moves Bootcamp. City of Mobile's Office of Supplier Diversity and Community Affairs teams are hosting a Money Moves Bootcamp. The first event will be held on March 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the National Maritime Museum of the Gulf Coast, formerly known as the Gulf Quest. Topics for this bootcamp include money mindset, credit building, making moves towards financial freedom, and preparing to be a boss. In order to register, find the flyer on our website and social media, as well as by contacting Arshani Kidd at 251-208-7967. With that, I'll turn it over to the Administrative Services Director, Joe Snowden, to recognize the Admin Services Employee of the Month.
Well, good morning. Once again, we're proud to have Nadine Jones as our Employee of the Month, along with Animal Services, and I would like to have Robert Bryan kind of speak to the many achievements she's had. Very short time she's been here, but she's made a great impact. So, Robert.
Good morning, Council. Mr. President. I'd like to introduce Nadine Jones here. So she's been with us going on a year now, and she has played many roles at the shelter from being a kennel tech to working in our animal placement program to now being our rescue coordinator. The goal of the rescue coordinator is to get as many dogs out of the shelter to other rescues around the nation as we can. And it has been a huge success as we brought her on mid-December for that, for that position. In addition to regular adoptions and fosters, working with the rescue program, she's nearly tripled the number of animals that we've been able to get out of the shelter in that same amount of time to northern rescues, and it has made a huge dent in our overall population at the shelter. So this program has been a huge success, and she's the first rescue coordinator that we've had at the shelter, and the effort she's put into developing that program, getting it off the ground and getting it moving in the right direction has been a huge success. One second. I didn't think so.
Mr. President, is this also the young lady that I heard about that was out there trying to catch Crocodile Joe on Chin Street? The alligator that we're trying to get, was that you?
Okay. I've asked her if she wants to help, but she hasn't come yet.
Oh, man. We have, for those of you don't know, we have this big alligator that is on Chin Street that we've been trying to catch now for about, what, two weeks now?
Actually, it's only been about four days.
About four days? Well, it seems like two weeks, 'cause she's out there and she keeps eluding us. But I really appreciate all of you and young lady. Thank you very much for everything that you do, and from what I hear, I think you need to be the person to catch the alligator. Thank you again.
Mr. President, I conclude the mayor's remarks.
All right, thank you.
Monthly Finance Report.
It's always fun to give a January financial report. So January, we had revenue of 69 million. Of course, 36 million of that came in from business licenses, which always goes January. Expenses 24, so we had net income of 44 million. The thing that's interesting, looking at what's going on right now, we're, we're in an economy where people are staying in the city, we're doing a better job with retention, we're doing a better job with hiring. Our positions are up, so this year, we're up 84 positions over this time last year. About half of those are in public safety. But with all that taken into account, we're still running positive and running positive above the business licenses. So, any questions?
Our council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
So, um, thank you so much for the information. So that's like a three mil, I know we had a budget for 66, that was about a $3 million increase. Is that more from a license?
Two million of it was from licenses.
And then, what was the other million?
Just in sales tax.
Sales tax was, so it was higher. All right, thank you.
And other council members.
Yeah, you said two million of it was from licensing?
From business licenses.
So this is part of the NASIS code change and increase we had on, for builders and contractors and those things?
From the overall, yes. It would include.
And that was from January 1?
Yes.
This is February, okay, I got you. Thank you.
And other council members. I thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second. They're properly moving second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on March 2nd on the Shear Road.
Madam Clerk, has this been revised to 12 AM?
Yes.
Okay, so moved.
Well, I'll just read them all out, okay? March 8th at Fort Conde Inn, March 16th on Charleston Street, March 23rd on the Public Safety Memorial Park, March 30th on Bragg Avenue, March, May 4th in Melvin Park, May 18th in Melvin Park, May 4th in Langen Park.
So moved.
They're properly moving second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearing today. It's a public hearing to rezon property located at 255, 257, and 259 Dogwood Drive from R1 to B1.
This open at the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? It's open. You need to come down to the podium by stating your name.
Good morning. My name is Greg Sad. My address is 3601 Spring Hill Business Park, Suite 200, Mobile. Thank you for letting me come in. Briefly, I'm gonna step aside in a moment so that if anybody has, comes up to speak and I need to readdress it, then I'll be standing by. But in the process, what would I have missed if I didn't show up today? That was one beautiful program. So thank y'all for having all those kids in here. It was beautiful. Thank you, sir.
Is anyone of this president that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to fix costs for demolition of structures at 611 McDonald Street, 559 North Carolina Street, 1156 Oliver Street.
This open at the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the application of Top Cat Limousine to operate a shuttle service.
This open at the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? You may come down to the podium by stating your name.
My name is Juanita Moles, and I'm the applicant for Top Cat Limousine, and I have obtained the background check, the mechanical check successfully, and commercial insurance lined up, and Secretary of State certification. If there's any questions, I'm here.
Any questions coming in from the council? Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Is anyone of this president that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Derek Bolware.
My name is Derek Bolware. I'm the CEO of Housing First Incorporated. We're located at 279 North Washington Avenue in Mobile. First, I'd like to thank the city council for your support of Housing First, specifically the Project Homeless Connect event that was held last month. I'd also like to thank Mayor Stimson and his administration for their support, especially Director of Public Safety, Robert Lasky. I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Lasky last week and get to know each other a little bit better, explain the services of Housing First and the process we have in Mobile for addressing homelessness. Before I get into the report and the outcomes of the numbers from Project Homeless Connect, I just wanted a brief statement about Housing First and information that maybe people don't know. And so this would be an opportunity. Housing First is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and the lead agency in our area for HUD's Continuum of Care, the COC. The COC is a separate entity from Housing First and is led by a volunteer independent board of directors tasked with serving the city of Mobile, Mobile County, and Baldwin County. As the appointed lead agency for the COC, Housing First Inc. has the responsibility of planning and executing the annual homeless point in time count, submitting our area's application for HUD's McKenty-Vento homeless assistance funding, as well as collecting, analyzing, and reporting our area's homeless data to the federal government. Housing First is also the administrator of the Homeless Coordinated Entry System, the Homeless Information Management System, that's called HMIS, and operates a number of programs providing housing assistance and homeless supportive services. A few of those are street outreach, housing case management support for the chronically homeless, disabled homeless, homeless families with children and youth, as well as those fleeing domestic violence, and homeless military veterans. Additionally, Housing First Inc. in collaboration with the Mobile community at large, organizes and executes the annual Project Homeless Connect event, a one-day resource fair designed to add value and provide direct assistance to those experiencing homelessness in Mobile. I'll be brief. The 10th Annual Project Homeless Connect Event held last month at the grounds, we ended up issuing 121 state IDs provided by ALIA. 148 individuals received legal assistance. That was provided by 22 volunteer lawyers and their legal assistants, along with District Judge Spiro Chariogatis, municipal judges Jeff Perloff and Carving Adams presiding. 166 individuals received health and wellness assistance. 437 were served by WAVE Transit, transported back and forth through the event. Over 80 service providers were in attendance. 653 volunteers that day, 330 provided by the University of South Alabama, the other half by the community. For a total of 563 homeless individuals served by that event, 40 more then were served last year.
Counsel, can I stand to one minute? Okay, you've got one more minute.
Council President, I think I nailed it. That was all on my notes.
Okay.
So, any questions?
Counsel.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
No, I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you for your service. That's just pretty amazing. I had, of course, I didn't get a chance to make it. I had a prior engagement this year, but last year, I had a chance to go in just to see, you know, the services that you all are able to provide, to see the volunteers. It's just amazing. So thank you so much for what you provide our city and our community.
Well, I appreciate it, and really, it's a community effort. Housing First is just in a, in an honored position to help coordinate, but this is truly a City of Mobile community event, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Charlie McCants.
Good morning. Charlie McCants, Gulf Coast Gladiators, 1417 Azalea Road. The reason why I'm here this morning is I have the distinct privilege of hosting the American Basketball Association Championships here in Mobile on April 19th and 20th at Azalea, Spring Hill College. One of the things that, one of the key reasons why I'm here is because of this historic first for the city of Mobile, we're trying to get the entire city and community involved, because it's a major event that's gonna happen here in Mobile. It's a first for Mobile and also a first for the state of Alabama. And one of the things that we want to try to do is make this event an event to where people that come to this event will want to come back and see or take advantage of all the great things that, that Mobile has to offer. The American Basketball Association consists of over 150 teams nationwide, and we are considered the largest sports league in the U.S. And to be able to host this event here is, I think, is great for not only the community, but for the city of Mobile as well. I want to thank the Sports Authority for getting on board to help make this a great event, and I invite each of you, I had emailed each of you information on this, and we want the whole city to get involved, because what happens at this event can be major, because we're using young men with the Gulf Coast Gladiators. We're getting them back into the community to be mentors for the many young people that we have. We believe that as an organization, the Gulf Coast Gladiators, we can make a difference in the community, and we also believe that this event can be a major event that can make a difference in the community as well. So we invite the council, the city, as well, to be a part of this event, and we thanks for the opportunity to, to speak this morning.
Any questions coming in from the council? Yeah, thank you so much for all the work you've been doing in our community, Mr. McCants.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tracy Glover.
Good morning, council, Mr. President. My name is Tracy Glover. I'm here on behalf of ARC, which is a local pro-animal group. We're here with some, I'm here with some of our members, along with Amanda Upshaw, who's the founder of Dominion Farm Animal Sanctuary. And we are here following up on a letter that we sent to the council and the mayor on February 1st in response to the incident with the horse who was beaten during the Mardi Gras parade and the video that was widely circulated afterwards. We appreciate that the city has taken some actions in response to the incident, but we believe that the incident really brought attention to a much more widespread, widespread problem. In our letter of February 1st, we asked the city to adopt several specific recommendations to help ensure the welfare of horses used in Mardi Gras parades going forward. So I'm just gonna read those recommendations real quick. One, ban any form of drugging of horses for the purpose of using them in the parade. As noted in the letter from First Equine Vet Services, parade horses should receive the same training that police horses are required to undergo as a way of avoiding stress and obviating the need for sedation, which can be dangerous. Two, have a sufficient number of thoroughly trained animal control officers, as well as veterinary professionals on duty to check. to check the health status of every horse being used in every parade. Because there are a large number of horses in the, and the parade route is long, in order for an animal control or veterinary presence to be meaningful, we recommend every horse be checked at the entrance and the exit of the parade route. They should be checked by a veterinarian for things like lameness, oversedation, weight, overall body condition. Three, horses should be required to have shoes appropriate for concrete or asphalt, and veterinarian on-site at the entrance would ensure this. Two, a farrier could also be on hand for shoeing issues. Every, four, every horse being used in parade should be required to meet certain health standards, including having an ideal body condition score, which should be assessed by a veterinarian or equine expert. Five, set weight ratio limits so that no rider weighs more than 20% of the horse's weight. Research shows that a horse can comfortably carry a rider of no more than 20% of its weight. Six, require all riders to be legally sober when riding. Seven, require all riders to complete safety and welfare training with a qualified equine trainer prior to riding any parade. And we believe that we really speak for the entire community in expressing our concern for these horses. I think we all saw the, the sort of outrage that was present, um, on social media, uh, and, uh, we believe that we also speak for the community in saying that if we can't ensure that the horses used in the parade are free from neglect and cruelty and abuse, then we shouldn't be using them at all. And, uh, we just urge the council to take action and adopt our recommendations. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Marvin Lou.
Mr. President, good morning. Administration, good morning. City of Mobile, good morning. Uh, Mr. President, some 34 years ago, um, as a freshman at Morehouse College, I learned how to play a game, and that game was the game of spades. Uh, at, at the beginning, I was not very good, uh, because I did not know how to play my hand. But one thing I learned about the game of spades is it requires partnership. Uh, even when you don't have any books in your hand, they play, they have a term where you, you can go kneel. Uh, and even though you're not going to turn any books, you're able to assist your partner with their books, um, by making sure you set them up properly to get to where they need to be. I say all that to say, in the midst of our conversation about addressing gun violence, it is necessary that we all stay at the table, regardless if we have Trump-type hands, or no bids, or no Trump at all. We all have to stay at the table. What does Trump mean? That means investment. That means cause. That means people involved. That means lives directly impacted. We have to realize that it's going to take all of us to make sure that we win this game, because the price at stake for this game is still high. The blood that is being shed, regardless if it comes from white or black, is still red. The potential losses, no matter what neighborhood they're coming from, are going to continue to result in the loss of grain. We have to realize that even though it may look like 1, 2, and 3, and 6 are the districts that are constantly being portrayed in the news, we need 4, and 7, and 5 to stay at the table. We need police and community to stay at the table. We need clergy and community to stay at the table. In that vein, the men of Capital Society for Training Incorporated and the Power of Community Initiative will be going back to the table in the Ziegler Community on tomorrow night at 6:00 PM for our Real Talk shop talk, at where we will have necessary discussions as we address the problems of violence in our city. We're also offering free haircuts and free manicures from 3:30 to 5:30 for all school age children, and 6:00 PM will be our discussion. Food will be being shared. The reason why is because we're staying at the table, so that peace will truly take its place here in the city of Mobile. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for staying at the table.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. Um, last November, at this very podium, I asked Mr. Linder to draft an amendment to the UDC ensuring that any and every matter regarding zoning, uh, will come before a Mobile City Council. Now, while what Mr. Linder proposed this morning in reference, um, to Chapter 64 of the Mobile Municipal Code, the UDC, uh, doesn't truly have any teeth in a holistic sense, uh, it still represents a step in the right direction. Unfortunately, this morning as well, however, um, to some disparities were found, uh, regarding how last year, we looked at a violation regarding the 15, uh, day radius in which notifications should we go out, and this was something that was inquired by Mr. Dave, uh, this morning. Yet, there has been no response to that matter that was in, uh, November. So, this is a sign of somewhat, uh, discrimination, and, and we need to make sure that that was on the record for today. Please, let's look at this, uh, regulating the unassigned, uh, fund balance. And when I thought about this and, and saw this agenda item regarding the $850,000, $839,000, uh, for the, the horse barn and the property being purchased, I immediately thought of my friend from District 6, Councilwoman Best Rich, and, uh, the, the, the push that she had regarding the Hank Aaron Stadium contract, and how so much was just being overlooked, and, and we didn't dive into the specificities of what needed to be done. I think the same thing is going on here, because we see we're only about 15, uh, horses will, will be, you know, in this barn or stable. This is near the Mississippi line, uh, where this property is. We know most of these horses are just used in the downtown area. Have we thought about how we could possibly repurpose on Virginia Street, where they are momentarily, and actually save, uh, a lot of resources? And I just think with this unassigned fund balance, we need to be putting our priorities first. There's so many things going on with housing and crime and, um, just poverty in general, and we're not really looking at that when we have these additional resources in place to do something. Um, lastly, I want to look at this, uh, public safety piece, please. Um, and as I've said many times before, uh, at this podium, uh, it'd be foolish for any Mobilean to think that seven people sitting up here or one person who's leading an administration would be able to create all the answers. Nonetheless, these individuals are supposed to advocate on behalf of these matters and put the resources in place to do so. But I'm not going to speak to the particular individuals today, more so I'm going to call upon the media, because when there are incidents that happen that are fatal, the media's quick to cover those, as well when there are things proposed by some of our reported leaders. Uh, those things are immediately put on the media as well. But when it comes to those things that actually that have proven have worked, they don't really get that covered. So, I'm begging the media to at least show the parents and the community and the people as a whole that there are options out here that work, and that needs to be covered as well. So, these are the things we love to have some responses to about, particularly with this unassigned fund balance. Um, and then as well, we can look at the UDC ban reform, because the zoning is a matter serious in the city of Mobile right now. Thanks for being on the floor.
CIP Resolution is held over. 21-176, authorized contract with Jay Payne Organization for pool upgrades at Taylor Park.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in the discussion. I would like to, uh, thank the administration for moving this, uh, on. Uh, this is a, um, to really to, uh, upgrade the, um, the park, the pool at Taylor Park. Uh, we had been having some issues on last summer with the pool, and then eventually had to close the pool down earlier, so hopefully that this contract will go ahead and pass today, and hopefully, um, for June, that this, uh, project will be completed for the kids in the Oakdale community. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolution is held over. 08-177, approved purchase order to Southern Emergency and Rescue Vehicle Sales for ambulances. 08-178, approved purchase order to Syntec for annual renewal of fueling system software. 08-179, approved purchase order to Think Guard for annual renewal of network protection software. 09-180, allocate funds from unassigned fund balance in the general fund to Capital Improvement Fund, MPD Mounted Police Facility. 40-181, authorize the purchase of 61-60, Gas and Loop Road West for police amount, for mounted police. 60-182, authorize settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved. Second.
They're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced, 09-018 through 64-020.
Mr. President.
Ennis.
I move, uh, that we take up 64-019 for immediate consideration, and the other two layover a one week pursuant to council rules.
Second.
Promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules weigh, Madam Clerk.
64-019, rezoned property located at 255, 257, and 259 Dogwood Drive from R1 to B1.
Move to table.
Second.
Promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item table.
Consent resolution is being introduced, 37-183 through 61-94.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move to waive the rule, that we waive the rules and take up these items for immediate consideration.
Second.
Promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules weigh, Madam Clerk.
37-183, 184, and 185 are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to Cali Ann's Irish Social Club for issuance of a retail beer off-premises-only license, liquor license to Parkway Food Mart on Dolphin Island Parkway, and for issuance of a retail beer off-premises-only liquor license to Parkway Liquor on Dolphin Island Parkway. 40-186, 187, and 188 are fix, fixing the cost for demolition of structures at 611 McDonald's Street, 559 North Carolina Street, 1156 Oliver Street. 58-189, declare we noxious group 1654. 60-190, approve award a special bonus to the Administrative Services Employee of the Month. 60-191, 192, 193, and 194 are determining appropriations to St. Paul's Episcopal School, Kingdom Covenant Connections Inc., Mothers Involved Against Gun Violence, and Providence Foundation Serve a Public Purpose in Approving Payments.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Resolution is being introduced, 01-195 through 37-202.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
I move we take up 08-197, 08-198, and 08-199 for immediate consideration, the, the remainder to lay over one week pursuant to council rules.
Second.
Promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules weigh, Madam Clerk.
08-197, approved purchase order to Quantico Tactical for night vision binoculars for police department. 08-198 and 199 are approved of purchase orders to Sunbelt Fire Inc. for fire bunker gear and for fire boots and helmets.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Call for public hearings, 41-203. Call for public hearing to rezone property located at 255, 257, and 259 Dogwood Drive from R1 to B1, scheduled April the 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcements.
Uh, District 1, Councilman Pan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to the pastors in District 1 throughout the city of Mobile. We had the opportunity to meet this past week to discuss ways how we can assist our community, our youth. Um, and one of the ways that we came up with is adopting schools throughout District 1. I'm really excited about that. More information will be coming soon. We also is working on to doing a June the 1st, um, District 1, um, rally with schools throughout District 1 as well, and not just District 1, but everybody's welcome in the city of Mobile, um, to participate. We will have speakers, um, but we want to make sure that, um, our faith-based community is a part of the commitment to create change in our city. So, it was the first meeting, and it went very well. So, thank you to all the pastors, all the ministers that came out. And if you haven't received a letter, you can reach out to myself, so we can get you connected. On March the 2nd, uh, we will have our second piece forum. I want to thank, um, the Public Sector Director, uh, Chief, um, the administration, the mayor, uh, for working together to, to move forward with this forum. Our goal is to create that conversation. That's how the pastor meeting became. We have to work together. We have to create ideas. We need people like Ms. Hill, and she's doing the same thing. We need people like Pastor Lou, who's doing the same thing. We all have to figure these things out, how we can work together and create change, um, and do it together. Um, and we might be doing it different, but we all come together and create that change. So, uh, my goal is, uh, we're gonna hear from different people, um, and, and get feedback and get ideas. And so, uh, March the 2nd, at the Dots Community Center in District 1, from 1:00 PM to 2:30. Also want to give a big shout out to Right Way Christians in the church on this past week. I had the opportunity to serve with them. Uh, we gave over 300 boxes of groceries away, um, this past weekend in District 1, and, um, it was really great to be able to serve and give back to the community. Also want to give a big shout out to Leila. Um, I know that, um, Councilman Smiles says she represent District 3, but she's one of my Kewona kids. So, she a part of District 1 too. So, um, you did an amazing job, Leila. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pan. District 2, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements, Mr. President.
District 4, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, um, draw attention to everyone in the public about an upcoming, uh, workshop regarding the resiliency pro, program for the city of Mobile. If you recall, about a year ago or so ago, the Water Institute was engaged to establish this plan that the city will likely use for a decade or more to come, and they're gonna use this plan to apply for grants. They're gonna use this plan to direct your resources throughout the city. And, uh, it's progressed along, but now we're to the point where we need to hear from you specifically, you specifically in District 4 about the things that you want to see. You want to see grant funds directed towards. What's important to you with regard to resilience? Resilience is, uh, a very broad term, and it, and it encompasses a lot of things, but this is going to equip the city to go out and get money on your behalf, on behalf of your project. So, on March 6th, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM, there will be a resilience meeting, and it will be held at the Seals Community Center, 540 Texas Street. And I encourage everyone to come to that meeting and give their input about what's important to you in your community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, District 5, Councilman Dave. District 6, Councilman Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just the only announcement I have is, um, our next District 6 community meeting will be, uh, March the 26th at 6:00 PM at Woodridge Baptist Church. Uh, that's it for me.
And we do have a public safety committee meeting, uh, this afternoon at 1:00 PM. Uh, Councilwoman Gregory is out ill today, but, uh, we're gonna let Councilmember Carroll, um, be on control of that meeting. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?